Our call this meeting to order the Regular Board Meeting of April 3, 2007 here at 5:30 PM at the Administrator Building, 1900 East Price Road, Roundville, Texas, 78521. Can we please stand up for a moment of silence? Thank you. Mr. Agler, lead this into pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which I stand, my name under God, in the name of the Constitution.
The flag is...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of Texas one and individual.
Roll call. Let the rec reflect that Dr. Scavell will be out of town, so presiding over the BISD Board. Mr. Lehman called in. He will be running late. As you see, everybody else is here. Before we start, we need to have a change on the agenda. I need somebody to go ahead and make a motion to recommend approving the agenda of the Regular Board Meeting of April 3, 2007 with any corrections. Can I have a motion? Moved by Agler. Mr. Agler?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Colunga. All in favor? Aye. Go ahead. Mr. Gonzalez, any changes?
I would only have one, ask the Board for one little maybe change as item number two on the conference presentation. The young lady's not here yet, so if whenever she shows up, we can come back to that agenda item when she gets here.
Correct, as noted. Other than that, all in favor of the agenda? Have a motion? Mr. Agler, motion by Mr. Agler. Second. Mr. Cortez, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. All right, we proceed on to Superintendent Report, Conference Presentation Number One, A1, the James Pearson Paige Turner Award, Morningside Elementary. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, members of the Board. We have a real nice award here to present, and we're proud of it, and I'll let the Air Superintendent, Ms. Mountphoss, introduce the presentation. Ms. Mountphoss.
Mr. Powers, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the Board, we are very proud of our Morningside Library under the wonderful direction of our librarian, Dolores Emerson, principal. We'll do the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Gonzalez, and members of the Board. Ms. Nieto, Morningside School Librarian, works diligently to promote the love of reading schoolwide. Due to her promotion for the love of reading in a new, in a unique way, Morningside Elementary received the James Patterson Paige Turner Award in the amount of $5,000. According to James Patterson, he quote said, "There were several thousand nominations, but the Morningside Elementary Reading Restaurant Program was a shining star." The $5,000 Excellence Award will be used to purchase library books and supplies. The application submitted by Ms. Nieto described the reading restaurant that is done each year in May. A theme or genre is chosen, and a menu of books based on this theme is created. The fourth and fifth graders become the servers, and the customers are the pre-kated third grade students. The students are dressed to match the theme. This year, our theme will be magic and mystery, and we will be offering a menu filled with books that have magic and/or mystery theme. The students are given a schedule, and the teachers bring their students, and at a point in time, they are seated at decorated tables, and their servers offer them a menu, and they have them choose a book that they want to have read aloud to them. The servers then go off to the kitchen to fetch the book and to return to the table to sit with their customer and read aloud to them. Sometimes the customers want to read too, so they are encouraged to take turns and practice shared or paired reading. Each student, servers, and customers alike gets a small souvenir to take home when they leave. So congratulations and thank you, Ms. Nieto, for your hard work in promoting the love of reading to all the students at Morningside Elementary.
Congratulations. I know your husband beat it.
I beat him.
Once again, we want to thank the Board of Trustees to Ms. Nieto for a job well done. We'll proceed on to item number three, Presentation of the GPS Tracking System. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, members of the Board. We've been looking forward to this presentation and this agenda item for two years. The Board of Trustees, two years ago, actually approved the budget to purchase a GPS tracking system. We're trying to look for the right GPS system, not just buy one. Something that worked with BISD, something that would integrate with everything that we have at Transportation already, and we had the opportunity to do a presentation today. Ms. Fox, Assistant Superintendent for Operations, is going to introduce this presentation. Ms. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Powers, members of the Board. As Mr. Gonzalez said, we have been, Transportation Department has been studying this for a couple of years now, and tonight we have not only Mr. Chirinos, the Administrator for Transportation, but also Mr. Mike Olds, Regional Sales Manager for Everyday Wireless. This project went out as an RFP, and we've looked at a number of them, studied them, and this evening we'd like to present the information that we believe is probably the best for the district. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Olds, Regional Sales Manager. Mr. Olds?
Good evening, everybody, Board members, Mr. Gonzalez, Ms. Fox, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of Everyday Wireless, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I was invited to do a short presentation. I will try to keep it short and just give you a bit of an overview of the GPS solution that we propose for you folks tonight. Little bit about Everyday Wireless. Our company is founded in the year 2000. We're exclusively focused on people transportation. That's the only vehicle tracking that we do, is people transportation. We design, manufacture, and equipment. We have equipment installed on over 9,500 school buses already in over 50 school districts. Give you a bit of a look, you'll notice Dallas County Schools is one of our clients, in fact, our largest client, with over 1,445 vehicles installed, and we're tracking those vehicles. Mr. Chirinos did his homework and has actually had contact with just about everybody on this list here, and certainly he's done his homework. Little bit about the implementation and training. We are and have proposed a full turnkey system. Included in that is implementation, which starts with scoping of the project. In other words, defining the pieces and assigning responsibility to each of those tasks. Part of the process will be to perform a final analysis on base station location. This is going to be where the sites are, they're going to have the antennas installed. I have a drawing that I'll show you, which is essentially the initial look at where to place these things, but the final analysis and study will give us the final locations. Everyday Wireless will do the installation of the base stations, will do the installation of the GPS equipment on the school buses. We will have onsite project management, 120 hours or three weeks in different blocks of time over different pieces of the project. Acceptance testing will be essentially determining that the system is operational and working as it's supposed to, and then the total timeline we expect to take from three to six months to complete the project. Training is a big part of this. There will be different kinds of training. Some training will be on the installation and equipment. As we know, over time, different buses are retired, and new buses come into the fleet. We want to be able to have your team here be self-sufficient and be able to move the equipment from an older bus to a new one, and that's part of the goal of the training. It'll be roughly four weeks of installation and training, another day to just train on the hardware itself, another day to train on the software that really pulls it all together. Coverage map, again, this is not the final determination, but initially, we're looking at a base station location at Stillman Middle School and Rivera High School. What are the benefits that you can expect to receive from the system? Well, as you know, because you've been taking a long time to really see what's out there and do the research, where are the buses? That's really the biggest question, and not, not at all times are people able to answer that question, but yet it's a basic and extremely important one. Are the buses on time? Are they early? Are they late? Are safety procedures being followed by drivers? You'll be able to monitor all of these things. Collecting information, not only the location of each vehicle in real time, but how fast it's going, what direction it's going in, whether the engine's running or not. Deployment of red and yellow flashers, stop arm, these are very relevant to safety and monitoring safety procedures. Doors opening and closing, both front door and emergency door, and additionally, there's a silent alarm button, kind of like what a bank teller has. Increased security by knowing where your buses are and seeing them on a map in real time, and that positional information is updated every 10 seconds. Increased level of service to the community, reduce the complaints. Over time, people realize you have implemented this technology, they know that you know what really happened, and if there are chronic complainers out there, eventually, they're going to realize, geez, they have the tools now, they know what really happened. And we've seen this in customer installations, where the number of complaints will go down over time, because you know you have this technology and you know for certain what really happened. A great example was about 4:30 this afternoon in Mr. Chirinos's office. A member of the community called, had one story to tell, get the driver on the radio, different story, and too many times, the manager was put in a position of who do you believe? He said, she said, and this technology will tell you for a fact what happened, when it happened, where it happened, and there is no mistake. You'll never have to deal with he said, she said again. Increased efficiency by helping to manage fuel costs, manage labor costs, help with complaint resolution, perfect example we just talked about. Automation of reporting of actual routes, what the buses really do instead of what they're supposed to do. State reports, other reports, and in the event of an accident, this will certainly assist in the investigation process by knowing where was the bus, what time, and how fast was it going. Better monitoring of speed of the vehicles, of time, and how long it really takes, the miles, actual mileage, and idling. And monitoring idling is really crucial for two reasons. One, fuel consumption and wasting of fuel when a bus is not traveling, but the engine's running, we know it's idling, we know it's using fuel unnecessarily, so we're talking about wasting fuel. We want to be able to reduce that, and you probably will see some pretty dramatic results in this department. Not to mention air quality, because we know where the buses are when they're idling, and many communities across the country have enacted legislation or in the process of doing so to restrict or ban idling of buses in front of schools. And what are the tools that people have to monitor that? Well, maybe somebody looking out the window, or some member of the community just happened to be driving by, but now you have the technology where you'll get reports daily that tell you which bus idled where for how long. So there's two really wonderful things when you monitor idling that are a result. Reduction in liability through better information and through increased safety and better fleet visibility, seeing where your buses are at all times. Integrated with the routing software, this is a really important one. You have the route planning software that's been in use for a while now. What that does is help you plan the routes, it helps you optimize your routing system to minimize the demand on vehicles and the amount of time that it takes while getting the job done. But once you hand the routes to the drivers, how do you know what they really do? And this is your way of knowing, because it enables you to compare with the integration of the planned route with the actual, what the buses are supposed to do compared to what they actually do. And you have two separate systems that, when they're integrated, really give you incredible power and leverage both kinds of technology. Return on investment, we expect a one- to two-year payback with this technology through reduced fuel consumption and a reduction in operating costs. And one of the nice features is future expandability. One is to potentially expand it beyond the 290 school buses to other maintenance and service vehicles of BISD, to expand the coverage area with additional base stations, maybe into adjacent districts, where you can expand your coverage area, and not only that, it gives them the opportunity to participate as well and realize economies of scale in that way. Another potential expansion capability is rider attendance tracking, and this is a whole new set of functions and features that enable you to track who is on the bus at any point in time. Okay? I don't know if any of you folks have had the opportunity to view the DVD on the Fox News Report that was on TV in Dallas about a year ago. I have that, and I'll show that if you guys would like and if time allows, but there's a little mention in there about the rider attendance tracking, and that again is a future expansion capability that you have. Integration with routing, it enables you to see on a map all your vehicles and updated their position every 10 seconds, and also on the right-hand side here, it's maybe hard for you to see, but we're laying an actual route over the top of a planned route, and you can see how well they compare and how closely they resemble one another. This enables you to know and graphically show, as well as report, when the bus actually did get there. Was the bus late? How long did it stop for? How fast was it going? You now have perfect, exact information to answer all these questions. Ongoing maintenance is another part of our proposal, another part of the turnkey solution that we will provide, where you have unlimited toll-free support and assistance, software updates, firmware updates, and firmware is the software, the intelligence that goes on the unit that is in the bus. Okay? Data, platform updates, you want to be able to get the most out of the data that we collect, and that's what this is all about, and the first year of the maintenance is free. Okay? If we have time, if you folks don't mind, let me play this for you. And it's about four minutes, it's, uh-oh. It's probably the best four-minute overview of the system that I've ever seen, and it's done extremely well.
From the outside, they look pretty much like the same old school buses, but under the hood, on the roof, and inside panels all over the place. Inside, there's more going on than meets the eye. Fox 4's Eric Glasser shows us the school bus is about to roll out in Dallas County that could keep your kids safe. Don't think of it as a bus. Think of it as a big, orange communication device designed to get your kid to school and back home as safely as possible.
Across the county, we want safety for our children. That is our ultimate goal. Whatever that takes, we want to do that.
Until by the end of the year, Dallas County Schools says its full fleet of more than 1,400 buses will be fitted with GPS devices, radio frequency card readers, and a communication software system second to none. The district already has close to 600 buses fitted with the equipment, enabling them to monitor their vehicles in real time, information like speed, fuel consumption, whether the vehicle is on track, on time, and much more.
Such as rear exit door opening. Each time the main door opens, we'll be able to monitor the engine components, monitor the emergency flashers.
If the system works as planned, it could be used to head off disasters as well. Miami, November 1995. A man claims he has a bomb and hijacks a busload of disabled children. Eventually, police killed the suspect. The kids all survive. In January 2002, a driver armed with a shotgun takes a busload of kids from Pennsylvania to Maryland. Police eventually spot the bus and save the children, but for several agonizing hours, the bus and the kids were missing. DCS's GPS tracking could alert authorities immediately if a bus strays too far off course, then pinpoint where it is. And radio frequency cards currently carried by special needs kids like 16-year-old Ozelle Morns work with a built-in card reader, let the system know when a student gets on the bus, whether it's the right bus, and whether he gets off the bus at the right stop.
We would be able to quickly locate where, what stop they were, they did get off of, so that we could send the correct responses immediately.
That's a big comfort for Ozelle's mom, Molly, who thinks the program should be expanded.
All kids should have it, yeah. But so much happening to kids, that way you know where they're headed all the time, especially on the bus.
Dallas County Schools says it will make the RF cards available to the nine school districts it serves, including BISD. It'll then be up to individual districts to decide whether to adopt the system. Of course, all this monitoring raises big brother issues with some drivers who resent their every move potentially coming under scrutiny. It was the same, say supervisors, when they put cameras in the buses, but American Civil Liberties Attorney Michael Lynn says there's really no legal basis for employees to protest.
Somebody in the employer has every right to know where you are and that you're conducting business as you should be. I would say that monitoring school buses that are carrying children and knowing where they are all the time is an excellent use of technology.
In fact, Dallas County Schools predicts in many complaint cases, drivers will be exonerated by reported data showing they were stopped at a particular railroad crossing or did maintain a safe speed on their route, and if not appropriate, disciplinary action could then be taken. Dallas County Schools says it's spending a little over $1 million on these technological upgrades, but they believe that the new system will pay for itself in fairly short order, both through increased efficiencies and a decrease in potential liability. In Dallas, Eric Glasser, Fox 4 News.
One last point to make about the video there. Again, the ID cards that you saw are an expansion capability for the future and not a part of this RFP and what you guys had specified. With that, I'll offer the chance to ask any questions you may have.
Thank you. Let me see, any questions by the Board of Trustees? Mr. Lehman? Mr. Colunga, you have one?
Just a question on the monitoring of the system. What kind of staffing does that require to be able to monitor those type of movements that, in order to verify that it's a correct, correct path, correct route, and the right direction on the staffing? That was mainly the question.
Okay. We normally see the existing staff being able to handle an additional responsibility because of the exception reporting capabilities. Just like video cameras on the bus, nobody's going to watch eight hours for every bus every day, just in case they might find something. This system is sophisticated enough to present to the users only those pieces of information that you may want to take a closer look at, exception reporting. And so it's really, in the case of, say, an idling report, you want to know which buses have violated an idling policy on a given day, and you, the user, are enabled to put in a parameter such as any bus that idled for more than 10 minutes, or seven minutes, or something to that effect. So it's not a huge demand on the existing staff because of the intelligence and sophistication built into the report.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the Board. I did some research on this with the other district that have it, like I talked to some of the directors, and the directors say that you highlight the specific areas that you want. Idling would be one, the speed of the bus would be another one, the loading, unloading, and all those factors are, you don't have to sit there for three hours and just go highlight it for you and alert the system when, when something goes wrong, okay, with that specific bus.
Thank you. Also, a question on the transmission of the data, the signal, is there, are there any situations where there would be any loss of signal or gaps in the information being received?
Yeah, there, there's a situation where a bus would travel outside of the radio range, and what happens is the data is buffered on the device on the bus and stored, and when it reconnects, when it comes back in within range, it will transmit all of the data that it wasn't able to transmit. So there's a period of time in that case where the bus is not visible in real time, but yet you still have the exact recreation of exactly what the bus did. The other piece I want to talk about there is the ability to add in these portable units that operate on cellular. So you might have a vehicle that you know is going to travel up to Dallas, or Waco, or San Antonio, and put one of these portable devices on it and have a cellular signal and be able to track it in real time, no matter how far it goes.
Thank you.
Mr. Lehman? Yes, sir. That was one of my follow-up questions, as far as portability, the ones that goes off the tracking system. What, what service or what provider do you use, or is it going to be adjusted to, is it Sprint, cellular, or any other system?
The 290 buses that we propose to install are going to be using a UHF, a dedicated radio system. The portable units are cellular, and ours run on the Nextel network, and I've actually produced a coverage map for this part of the state, and you have excellent coverage.
So Nextel will be part of, I mean, we, I guess we have Sprint, correct? We have existing, I mean, we're talking about any phone or as particular, because I know most phones have GPS capability.
If I may, let me, I did ask those same questions, and let me tell you how this works, but right now, the system we're doing would be strictly for, within BISD, funded lines for regular routes. We have the ability, which we will exercise that ability, to go ahead and buy cellular units, which would be either Nextel, which, it really doesn't matter what we use, whether we use Sprint or whatever, this is $9.99 a month regardless, and you put it on the bus. We can buy 20, 30, 40, and move them from one bus to the other. The other option, which I like also, is going to be, and I already asked the gentleman about it, is to work with our neighboring districts, such as McAllen, Mercedes, and let them, let them install, or let us install an antenna there, and then we install them at different school districts, then it's, we, one-time cost of the antennas, and we got the whole valley covered. So we're looking at those. We start off with our own district first, and then definitely going to buy a few, 20, 30, I don't know how many, depends, we'll get together with staff this summer and see how many buses are going to be going out of the valley, and we'll use the portable cellular devices, it will be Nextel, and we pay the $9.99 a month on those regardless, and then see if we can get some antennas up and down the valley to cover all the valley, to where we travel for, for games. That way, we don't have to worry about where a bus is during a football game, a basketball game, any type of UIL event or anything like that. We'll know exactly where the bus is.
That was my question, UIL in sports would be able to be tracked.
We're, we're on top of that part, so we know we're going to have a little bit, not a whole lot, $9.99 a month, is that what you said?
It's under $10, yeah.
But the system is, the system is compatible, so?
Yeah.
We don't have to buy anything additional other than the cellphone itself?
Well, it's actually an embedded device. It's not a handheld, it's not a cellphone. It's, it's just like the box that, that goes on the bus with the radio unit, except these are configured to be portable. It's, it's not a phone.
Okay.
It's just attached to the bus?
All righty. And also, I don't know if, Mr. Powers, I know that the item, there's an agenda item for action, item 32. I just had questions that, I mean, I don't know if they want to stay here.
Just wait till 32 item, it's circled.
I understand that, but, okay, it's circled, so, okay, I just wanted, for the courtesy of the people standing here. Also, safety mechanisms in the, in this device, or this system, does the system automatically come on? I know I came in late, and I apologize, but does the system come on automatically when the bus starts? And as far as childproof or terrorist-proof, can the system be shut off accidentally or manually?
The device is mounted in a place where people can't get to it, so it's protected in that sense. It is tied directly to the battery, but it uses just a very, very tiny, minimal amount of power. At 4:00 AM, it sends what we call a heartbeat to basically the brain that lets the brain know, hey, I'm here, I'm, I'm working, and we have health reports where you could know that all of these units are working. And so it basically gets a warm start in the morning, it's already going when they turn on the ignition, and it's already locked into the GPS.
So it goes online when the bus moves?
Yes.
Automatically, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Other than that, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, folks.
All right, we'll proceed on to item four, Notification of the Betterment Fund Change Orders and Contract Change Orders. Mr. Gonzalez?
There's a notification of a, of a Betterment Fund Change Order for this particular building. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer it.
Any questions by the Board?
Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Page 12. I need to go to it, just one moment. Just out of concern, is that a, I noticed that the manufacturer requires the parameter to be of wood to nail something, is that, is that what this is all about?
Correct.
If it's a manufacturer requirement, how do we miss that on the actual architecture?
Architect just missed it on the specs, and that's why we have a Betterment Fund to be, just in case they miss, one of those things, they miss one of those things, we need to put it up there, all the way around.
What happens when we run out of money on the Betterment Fund?
Well, we're not going to run out of money on the Betterment
know, hey, I'm here, I'm working. And we have health reports where you could know that all of these units are working. And so it basically gets a warm start in the morning. It's already going when they turn on the ignition, and it's already locked into the GPS.
So it goes online when the bus moves?
Yes.
Automatically, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? None of that, well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, folks.
All right, we'll proceed on to item four, notifications of the Betterment Fund change orders and contract change orders. Mr. Gonzalez?
There's a notification of a Betterment Fund change order for this particular building. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer it.
Any questions by the board?
Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Page 12. I need to go to it, just one moment. Just out of concern, is that a... I noticed that the manufacturer requires the parameter to be of wood to nail something? Is that what this is all about?
Correct.
If it's a manufacturer requirement, how did we miss that on the actual architecture?
The architect just missed it on the specs, and that's why we have a Betterment Fund to be, just in case they miss one of those things, they miss one of those things, we need to put it up there, all the way around.
What happens when we run out of money on the Betterment Fund?
We're not going to run out of money on the Betterment Fund.
Okay. I just thought it was curious that such a simple...
We're almost finished, so... Yeah, it's a simple thing, and they forgot that the two by six, all the way around.
They just didn't know how to fasten those suckers, huh? Okay.
Any other questions? Nope? Okay, we'll proceed on... Before we proceed, is...
The young lady?
Not yet. Okay, we'll proceed on to item B, standing board agenda, board calendar. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Powers, members of the board. There are quite a few things I want to bring notice to the board. First of all, we're not going to have another board, regular scheduled board meeting this month, so we're going to be out, so we've got a lot of things to cover for the month of April. First of all, I want to start off by saying that this is... I think this is the first time we ever had four teams in the soccer, being the playoffs, and still alive on the regional quarterfinals. So that means we guarantee two teams going to San Antonio. Whoever wins tonight, the two teams that win tonight automatically go to San Antonio. That means we're the best in the valley, without a doubt, top four teams right here in Brownsville. I wanted to make that as an announcement, more than a calendar, but there is a game tonight. And also, of course, the results from golf just came in for district championship, and both boys and girls Hannah teams are the district champs, so that's a good one for us also. So we're doing a lot of things that are positive in this district. And we're moving forward with them, and that's a lot of praise for our students, more than anything else. Things that are important, we have the Spring Parent Conference for Porter and Lopez Clusters on next Thursday, a week from this Thursday, at the Brownsville Event Center. If some of you board members are still going to be in town, and almost all of you are going to the National Convention, but if you're still here, that's a good event to go. And believe it or not, the 13th is the end of the fifth, sixth week. That means we've only got one, six weeks left to go in this school year. As I say, time passes fast when we're having fun, and I think we've had a lot of fun this year. Teacher Job Fair is on the 14th from 8:00 to 12:00 at the Brownsville Event Center. That's when we start recruiting our teachers. That's the first big job fair that we have. We're ahead of most everybody in the valley. So all those students that are going to be out there, are going to be graduating, they're going to be looking for jobs, we're ready to interview, so we have a big job fair. And Mr. Penella and his staff are ready to go, along with all the principals that are going to be out there interviewing potential candidates. Then there's the big week, the week of the 16th. It's all tox testing week. Basically, it's a dead week. All we do is tox test at all grade levels. And it starts out, and it just goes the whole week. So it's important for us to be cognizant of that. The parents, if they're watching, be cognizant that kids need to be ready, they need to be prepared for that tox testing, especially at the exit level. It's very important that they do well. We also have on the 21st, the Superintendent's Golf Tournament at Rancho Viejo. I'm very proud to say that the commitments, that committed, they're coming in. This is going to be the best year we've ever had as far as corporate sponsors. I think we're up to 18 corporate sponsors, 17 or 18? 17 corporate sponsors compared to about 12 last year. So they're really coming through with their contributions in support of our kids. That means more money for students that are asking for scholarships from this tournament. So I ask everybody to support it, and it's going to be at Rancho Viejo on the 21st. I hope most of the board members can be there. We'll put you in a team, even though you might not play. You'll be put in a team, and you can go out there and putt, or whatever, help out, be a part of. We all know we're not going to win. I'm not going to win. I'm not a good golfer, but I'm there for the kids, it's not about...
I'll be with Mr. Colunga.
All right. Get you all together in one golf cart. So it's an important event. Also, we have going to have the last Superintendent's Coffee, and that will be on the 30th. That's where the Rivetta Cluster at 9:00 AM at Garcia Middle School. So if you haven't had the opportunity to go to a coffee, this will be the last one. We have one per cluster this year. This is the last one we're going to have, and it sort of closes up the end of the year for us. So if you can, make it out there, at least do. It really gets us a good communication with the parents. Every coffee that I've had this year has brought out numerous, between 150, 250 parents. These are not... I don't usually take staff, there's not a... Hey, you have 200 staff members out there. This is 200 actual parents that are there, listening, communicating. I do a bilingual thing all the time to be able to communicate with those parents. So if you're there, please, if you can, please come and attend. It'll be the last one we have. It'll sort of be the end of the year type program that we're going to be having. And then the next scheduled board meeting is in May, it's on Tuesday, and it's May 1st.
Any questions on the calendar? Any questions? Nope? All right, we'll proceed. Oh, Mr. Colunga, I'm sorry.
A question on, since we only have one meeting, will there be any special calls or any other committees during April?
There'll be some committee meetings. We're still working out the dates on those. There's a lot of activities going on. For example, this is a real short week. This is a four-day week. Next week is a four-day week. Mr. Penella has asked, and I haven't asked Dr. Escobedo, because the only one that can call the special call board meeting is Dr. Escobedo. But I will be in contact with him hopefully tomorrow when he's back in town, and ask him if there's a possibility of a 10th, next Tuesday, a week from today, having a special call board meeting concerning some personnel issues. It'll be limited as to what will be... And then we have some... I know that we need a facilities committee meeting, and that'll be hopefully either before we go to San Francisco or right after we come back. And I know we need a curriculum committee meeting to bring us up to date on where we are in curriculum. So, and if... I also have some insurance issues that are coming up, and we need to present that to the board. Who's insurance of insurance? Did you, Mr. Powers? We've gotten the preliminary reports on the audits. We want to share that with the committee before we bring it to the board, so. So a lot of things that we need to come in, but yes, we will have some of those committee reports. We need to work it around because of so many activities that are going on.
Yeah, I think we're going to have an insurance meeting, I think, what, first week of May? Somewhere around there? That's what we decided on that.
Yes. We might come in a little bit earlier with the audits.
All right. Just tell us.
Does anybody have a real problem with maybe having some noon meetings if we can, because of so many activities going on at night?
No, Mr. Cavazos. All right. Public audience? The next, in item six, public audience. The next item on our agenda is public comment period. This is the time for citizens, staff, and students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and subject matter of your comments must appear on the signing sheet, which is located at the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments. We will, with all due courtesy, Mr. Sedanu will enforce the time limit, the board attorney. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against an employee or officer, I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct your proceed with BIS formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, or GF loco. With all those cautions in mind, we'll be glad to hear your general comments. Please state your name, and remember you have five minutes to present your comments. All right, number one, Johnny Mary Cavazos, Cancer Relay for Life.
Good evening, distinguished board members and Superintendent Hector Gonzalez. My name is Maria Cavazos, and this is my husband, John Cavazos. We are in charge of recruiting teams for the Cancer Relay for Life. I would like to take a few moments of your time to thank BISD for allowing the Cancer Relay for Life to be held at Sam Stadium on Saturday, April the 21st. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the following schools for participating: BAC, Pace High School, Porter High School, Hannah High School, and Lopez High School. This is the first time that this many high schools have participated. In the past, it's only been Hannah High School. Lucio Middle School, JV Garcia Middle School, Vela Middle School, Oliveira Middle School. Benavides Elementary, Ituria Elementary, Vermillion Elementary, Victoria Heights, Putnet Elementary, Egley Elementary, Sharp Elementary, and Ortiz Elementary. As a footnote, St. Joseph Academy and Fort Isabel High School are also participating this year. BISD is the largest employer in Brownsville, and it would be wonderful to see more of the 50 or so schools that comprise BISD participating. We wish to encourage any other schools that have not yet submitted their registration sheets, that it is not too late to get behind this worthwhile cause. BISD is like a huge family, and we know that many of us, if not all of us, have been affected by cancer in some way, whether it has affected someone we love, someone we know, one of our students, or someone we work with. Distinguished board, Mr. Superintendent, we ask that you encourage more schools to get out there and relay for life Saturday, April the 21st. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Mr. Cavazos. Your work is really, truly appreciated.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce a group that's here visiting us today, including several people, but including Victor Manuel Escudero, who is the Consul of Mexico in Brownsville, and with him Evangelina Polendo, who has a very warm invitation for you.
Thank you, Mari. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Hector Gonzalez, Superintendent, Mr. Enrique Escobedo, President of the Board, members of the board. This will be the second year in a row that we have this Parent Youth Leadership Summit. We call in Spanish cultura de la legalidad, this culture of lawfulness. And while we're expecting, we have some pictures about the event last year that was a success in Matamoros with a dozen of teenagers participating, and also here in the event center in Brownsville. Please, you can see these pictures with the... This is in the Olympic Stadium in Matamoros. And we have the participation of the Chief of Police and authorities of the law enforcement in both sides of the border. The idea with this conference is to educate and promote the values between the teenagers and the parents. Also with us is participating the authorities of the US consulate, Matamoros, and the Presidente Municipal, the mayor of the city of Matamoros, and the DIF. We are with us Evangelina Polendo from the DIF, and also members of this, the Mexican consulate here, Marta Portillo and Barbara Gutierrez that are with us. We just want to inform that we have been working very hard with the members of this important BISD, particularly with the Assistant Superintendent Berta Peña, and also the Assistant Superintendent Beatriz Garcia, with the bilingual programs with Maria Gonzalez, and with the parents' involvement of Rosalva Larasquito and Ismael Garcia, too. And thank you for your support. This is part of the region, of the work that we are making together, both cities, Brownsville and Matamoros as one region. Thank you for the support, and I expect that the BISD will be able to participate in the Matamoros side in the meeting Thursday, April 26th, and we have in the schedule here in Brownsville in the event center on Friday, April 27th. I hope it will be a success. Thank you.
We're passing out to you an invitation, a personal invitation, to attend the event center on the 27th. Look forward to seeing you there. We'll have over 300 BISD students and over 200 BISD parents. And item 17 on the board agenda is a group, the delegation that you see here, that will go over on the 26th to participate in this collaboration. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Proceed to item... I mean, item, number three, George Rodrigo, MISC.
That's the first time I get called an item.
Nothing.
Superintendent Gonzalez, Mr. Powers, and board members and administration, I'm happy to be here. Sometimes I wonder if you get tired of listening to my voice. I know I'm not tired of listening to my voice. I'm going to read something that I hope I have enough time, and maybe the attorney will be a little tolerant. I'm going to read something, and I want you to pay close attention to what I'm saying. BISD schools believe that all children can succeed. Set high expectations with a challenging curriculum. Hold a proven record of academic excellence. Score well on national norm tests. Have qualified, experienced, and effective teachers. Teach respect of self and others. Instill the value of service to the community. Encourage active parental involvement. Prepare students to be productive citizens. Provide a safe and caring environment. This is the St. Mary's private school, Catholic school brochure, but it mirrors what we do. The only thing I left out is assist parents with the faith formation of their children. But everything else, BISD schools do. So I think we should be proud of ourselves. When I was looking at this, I said, well, it matches us, except for God. And that has... That's a personal issue. On the salaries, when the Budget Committee meeting is going to start, we're recommending 2% for top administration, 5%, and this doesn't sound right, but I don't know how else to put it, for low-level administration. 1,200 for all classified staff, 2,400 for the teachers. We always want the biggest part, I don't know why. Austin has already approved about $1,000, so we only have to come up with the difference. I think Perry... I don't know if Perry has signed it yet. I'm sure I'll be corrected after the meeting, but he better sign it, if he knows what's good for him. So when the Budget Committee meeting starts, those are our goals. There's a lot of grievances coming up the pike. We need some sort of training to be done so that we can take care of the grievances at the campus level or at the business level, instead of having to bring them to you and put you in a situation where you have to decide between the employee and administration. It's always a lot better when you can talk about it and settle your differences before. Yes, there will be some that'll come up, but it's been too many. We need to try to get rid of these grievances at a level where we can talk them out. Item number 31, Teach for America. We get some excellent teachers that come down and do their, I believe it's two-year stint. We have a situation, though, that they leave after the two years, and then they go to private schools, not all of them, but some of them. They go to the voucher schools, and then they try to recruit our students. It's up for approval on the... At this meeting, item number 31, I don't know if there's any way we can put a non-compete clause that if they leave our district, they cannot teach in our district and compete for our students. Perhaps that might be a good idea. Item number 19 is a Chamber of Cobbers. I hope that's just there for approval. We need to be participants in the community, just like we expect the community support to support us. We need to be supportive of our community. And finally, I attended an insurance committee meeting, and we're working diligently on the clinic for our staff, the free clinic. I know it's not free, that's a misnomer, but I think if we do our research, and I appreciate administration going... administration going, going into and looking into it, I think it's something that would be very good for our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, George. We'll proceed to Item 2, A2, Brownsville Downtown Lions Club Essay Contest Winner, Lopez High School, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, members of the Board. We're very excited about this student, and I'll have Ms. Monfilets go ahead and introduce this presentation.
Mr. Powers, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the Board. Melissa Benavides is a junior at Lopez High School. I had the privilege of hearing her essay read that she wrote this afternoon, is truly an excellent essay, won her, as you can see in the background information, a trip to Italy, to Lions Camp there. Melissa informed us this afternoon that she started out as a Lions Camp participant when she was in first grade here in Texas. So it is with great honor and a great deal of pride that I introduce Ms. Dawn Hall, our Campus Principal, to present to you, Ms. Melissa Benavides.
Good evening, Superintendent Gonzalez, Board President, members of the Board, and Community members. Melissa Benavides is number one in our junior class. She's ranked number one since her freshman year. This is a true case of where you see a young lady for whom excellence is a way of life. She is an outstanding athlete. She participates in cross-country track and soccer. As a matter of fact, the reason that she was a little tardy tonight is that they were looking at a knee injury. So at present, she has been sidelined because of this, but believe me, this is a woman who is in fighting trim, and she'll be back. Sports are very important to her life. She's a two-time track and field regional qualifier, and she's a Lady Lobo Soccer Team Captain. She's soon gonna be a world traveler, as Ms. Monfilets told you, she's going to be going to Italy. She had plans to attend UT, but since some of the other outstanding universities have been taking a look at her, she's keeping her options open. She's looking at some of the Ivy League schools, and they're very interested in her. She is an example of our motto, which is that Lobos always, always, always lead the pack. We're extremely proud of her and what she has accomplished, and I can tell you, this is going to be a young lady to watch. She will be a leader for us, and she will be a proud member of our community. So, one, two, three, four. Can you bring her around so she can shake your hand?
Can you just wait right there, like, for your presentation?
Sure. While we're waiting, I would like to invite the Board members. Lopez High School is going to have a Fine Arts Academy meeting where we have an Achievement Night. It's on April 26th at 7:00 in our theater, and we would love to see you come if, if your schedule allows.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Powers.
Ms. Aguilar.
Would be out of line, we'd ask the parent to come for us, so we can congratulate the parent also, she's a president.
If the parents are here, are the parents here?
Yes.
Come on up here too, ma'am, that's your daughter.
Thank you, sir.
As always, BISD truly has some of the best students in the state of Texas, and she's just one of the examples we have at BISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're proceeding on to Item 7. Closed meeting, in pursuit to the Texas Government Code 551-074, 551.082. We'll be going into their, the Level 3 Board Review Grievance, Item 6, Level 3 Grievance, Nancy Walker, Number 012-06/07, 7, Level 3 Grievance, Linda Shay, Number 013-06/07, and 8, Level 3 Grievance, Laura Salis, Number 014-06/07. Board reconvenes after closed meeting. A9, Board Action on Level 3 Grievance, Nancy Walker, Dash, Number 012-06/07. Do I have a motion? Motion dies. 10, Board Action on Level 3 Grievance, Linda J. Shay, Number 013-06-07. Do I have a motion? Motion dies. 10, I mean 11, Board Action on Level 3 Grievance, Laura Salis, Number 014-06-07. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we remand the grievance to administration for handling with the Board's instructions and discuss in executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Colunga, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating there's no need for discussion or deliberation on the following items. On recommend approval of following general function items, A12, A13, 14, 15, 18, 21. On B, recommend approval of the following payments, B24, 25. On C, recommend approval of the following budget amendments, C26, 27, 28, 29, 30. Under E, recommend approval of the following bids, proposals, and purchases, 33. Under 9, closed meetings, A Personal Matters, A35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41. I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation administration has reflected on the agenda for those items. And we got a motion by, uh, Mr. Aguilar.
Second.
A second by Mr. Lehman. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, on Item 35, I would just like to abstain as, as to Sandra Cortez, and on 37, I'd like to abstain as to Linda Aguilar and Teresa Aguilar.
Thank you, and also on Item 35, I'm gonna abstain on Sandra A. Powers. Any other? Okay. We go to A16. Recommend approval for students Manuel Reyna, Marco Alvarez, Rebecca Garcia, Kimberly Martinez, Olivia Figueroa, how do you say that? Figueroa. And adults, Dor Lopez, Eliza Carrasco, Rachel Ayala, Ronnie Luis Renfro, to travel out of state to participate in the International Science and Engineering Fair in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Do I have a motion?
I'm just going to...
Okay. Approved, I mean, motion by Mrs. Gavon, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, Susan Gavon.
Yeah, I, I wanted to state that there's, these five students will be going to Albuquerque, New Mexico, and I'd like to really congratulate the students for that effort, and what a fantastic, fair-to-go-to science and engineering, and just a matter of emphasis that there are three ladies going, and usually, right, engineering, you have, so I'm glad to see that.
Okay, no other comments? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 17, recommend approval for BISD personnel to travel to H, Matamoros, San Polipas, Mexico on April 26th, 2007, to participate in the Second Annual Binaational Youth Leadership Summit. The following BISD personnel will attend as follows. Hector Gonzalez, Superintendent, Berta Peña, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instructions, Rachel Ayala, Area Assistant Superintendent, Ismael Garcia, Special Programs Administration, B Garcia, Elementary Curriculum Administration, Maria V. Gonzalez, Legal Administration, Teresa Alacorn, I think she's been moved, so what, like, Guidance and Counseling Administration?
She's still there.
Okay, she's still there. Okay, Rosalia Lardesquito, Parent Involvement Coordinator, Mary Louis Sparza, Federal Programs Supervisor, Felicia Sanchez, GNC Counselor, Guidance and Counselor, what, GNC, okay, and uh...
De Anita.
De Anita Martinez, bilingual league teacher, Elizabeth, man, that's another long name.
I really...
Loguetas, there you go, bilingual ESL Counselor. Anna Aguilar, Police Officer, Crime Prevention, and Chief Oscar Garcia will be presenting Internet Safety to the students. Do I have a motion? Mr. Aguilar, motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, seconded. Uh, Mrs. Susan Gavon.
Yes, I'd like to say that during a time in our country when we have a lot of conflict with other nations, and we have a border that's considering a wall being built, I'm very proud to say that I live in a city, and I, I am part of a district that not only embraces another nation, but opens their arms and shares leadership skills with the youth of, of two countries. And I just feel real proud that, that we're involved in this, and, and I, I really feel that we should continue with this effort.
Thank you, Ms. Gavon, we echo your sentiments. Any other comments? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 19, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Pay For the Annual Membership Investment Fees to Brownsville Chamber of Commerce in Mountain Attic, See $5,000 from loan maintenance, uh, local maintenance budgeted funds. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Ms. Gavon, second.
Second.
Colunga, uh, Ruben Cortez? Let's circle that one. Pat Lehman?
Well, it needs to be in form of a motion, because it's...
Wherever you did a motion.
No, that's why you have to be circled.
Oh, okay. Well, Pat Lehman, proceed.
Well, it was discussion and consideration, that's why.
Okay, all right.
I thought you might forget, since it's been about two years. But anyway, my only question is, I would like still, my same request that I did last year, I would like to be emailed on events from the Chamber, I think, unless you have gone, Mr. Superintendent. How many functions have you attended from the, from the Chamber? And on the Education Committee, how many members of the BISD sit on that committee?
If I may, uh...
Proceed.
Mr. Powers, members of the Board, I bother this item, and guess it, I just didn't wanna pay it, I wanted to bring it to you all, in the sense that, that it is part of the district, and we, I hope to support the Chamber of Commerce. To me, it's important to support Chamber of Commerce, to me, with the city. I do work well with Angela Burton out there. Uh, as part of the Chamber of Commerce, we did go in a legislative session, we accompanied them to, to Austin as a group, and, and we met as a group over there. Uh, there's a lot of functions that are out there. Personally, I have not attended very many functions. I could do go, I've gone to two or three of their meetings, and, and been there with them on, on occasions. Uh, there's a lot more functions that I could attend if I had some time to do it, but as far as supporting the Chamber of Commerce, I think because of the fact that we have been open and supportive, they've made enough, at least Angela Burton has, to include us now, and emailing me on some events that are taking place. We will continue to, to present as they email us some events to you all, we will proceed to, to do that. Right now, the only events that I, since I take an office, has to do with legislative type issues and, and discussions and meetings that I represent the district with, when I go to their meeting at, at the, there at the old mall that they had down, the downtown area. So that's where I go. Uh, other events, no, unless you all have some invitations, I've had no particular invitations to any particular events as such, but I know that they're making an effort, as well as we need to make an effort, to be a part of and share.
And the Education Committee?
I don't know who sits on the Education Committee, to be honest with you. I would have to ask Angela to...
We need to be inclusive, I think, BISD should be part of that.
Sure.
Such a base. I knew, I mean, I know that that, that was part of the condition.
Mm-hmm.
We'd like to, for, for the amount of participation dollars, I think we should have a voice.
I'll work with Angela on that.
I highly recommend it, I've been a member for 14 years in my office and my business, so, it's an excellent organization, and, and that's just support of Brownsville. So, other than, any other discussion, other than that, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, proceed to 20. Recommend approval for the 12 students from Hannah High School to travel out of state to Kansas City, Missouri, to compete in the National High School Chess Championship on April 13th through the 15th, 2007. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Okay, Mrs. Gavon, motion, seconded by Mr. Aguilar. Uh, Susan, Mrs. Gavon, I'm sorry.
I always come back to the, the chess students, they're ambassadors, they go all over the country, all over the nation, representing us, and I just wanted to wish these students a lot of luck. My daughter did graduate from Hannah, and I know what it's like to have a chess program, and I encourage the district to, to always have this higher type of learning in our district.
Echo. Any other comments?
Just the, the one that I had before, as far as the criteria for selection, and, and I noticed that the chess funds, I guess BISD funds are paying for this 100%?
On, on this particular one, I believe they are. Uh, it all depends on, like, on the handbook, and we need to revisit the handbook, but, but for first and second place teams, they do send them out on, and then the other ones to the chess clubs and so on. And I wanna, I wanna clarify some, some, something, because the member asked me, well, what's this levels and different things, and the, the thing about it is, there's many different levels in chess, from beginners all the way to experts. So, uh, there could be a team that, that, that wins in their division, that's why it's called their division, depending on the level of expertise that's there. Some teams will say, "Well, we won," in another community, and say, "We're the national champions." At what level? Well, we're, we're, we're at the beginners level, where our district could be at the intermediate or advanced levels. So it all depends how you, how you look at it as far as championships are concerned, and that's important to articulate to the public also. They say, "Well, what about the other ones?" Well, they might be at beginners levels. Our program is very well advanced, because we've had it for numerous years, so our level is beyond the beginners levels, we're already at the higher level.
And our master, who is our master, or we follow the college, the university's master?
Ms. Peña, who's our master? Who, who, who's the one that really does our chess? Do you know by chance right now?
Answer for the school?
No.
The master, there, there, there must be a, a master?
We just have coaches, we just have coaches, right? But I think we follow the, the coaches.
Mr. Lehman?
Uh... Ms. Aguilar?
Uh, they were understanders, or I've contacted several schools, and some of the schools hire their own consultants to train their kids, and that might be the same one, I know Russell hired one, and Bella might have a different person. And the thing is, that some of these schools raise more money than others, so they are able to hire as many consultants as money can do. I mean, according, that's what goes out there in the field. My only concern is, if they go into a national conference, is sanctioned by the guidelines that we have? I mean, that's, that's great, as long as we follow the guidelines that we have in that book, because that has been a board approved.
Mm-hmm, those are board approved. My question still is, do we have, who's our master on?
We don't have one specific for the entire district.
And that's the only way it can be sanctioned, so that's something we need to revisit. I like to visit in committee, or maybe expand the...
Bring it up in curriculum. Aguilar?
Yes, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Lehman, because, like I said, some schools can afford to hire a consultant, others cannot. It all depends who, the, how active the parents' group is, that they are able to have this massive power to raise money. So what about the other schools that really need some kind of help? It's not there.
Exactly, that's, that's my point.
Again, we need to revisit, and I think I had mentioned it to you, Mr. Gonzalez, perhaps the, the administrator in charge of the chess programs should go out there and... We just have coaches, we just have coaches, right?
But I think we follow the, the coaches.
Mr. Lehman?
The Metagular?
Uh, they were understanding, so I've contacted several schools. And some of the schools hire their own consultants to train their kids. And that might be the same one. I know Russell hired one and Bella might have a different person. And the thing is that some of the schools raise more money than others, so they are able to hire as many consultants as money can do. I mean, according, that's what goes out there in the field. My only concern is, if they go into a national conference, is sanctioned by the guidelines that we have? I mean, that's, that's great. As long as we follow the guidelines that we have in that book, because that has been a board approved.
Mm-hmm, those are board approved.
My, my question still is, do we have, who's our master on?
We don't have one specific for the entire district.
And that's the only way it can be sanctioned. So that's something we need to revisit. I, I like to visit in committee or maybe expand the, uh...
Bring it up in curriculum. Aguilar?
Yes, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Lehman, because, like I said, some schools can afford to hire a consultant, others cannot.
Yeah, I think we need to be inclusive.
It all depends who, the, how active the parents' group is, that they are able to have this massive power to raise money. So what about the other schools that really need some kind of help? It's not there.
Exactly, that's, that's my point.
Again, we need to revisit it. And I, I think I had mentioned it to you, Mr. Gonzalez, perhaps the, uh, the administrator in charge of the chess programs should go out there and look into the guidelines and perhaps revisit some of those things and bring it to the board.
I would like to in-house that, that, that's where I'm headed. So that's something that, and you made a very valid point, Mr. Aguilar, that, uh, we need to, this has been a very powerful tool in chess. This is something that we can't, uh, we neglected it for many years. And by luck, uh, by sheer luck, three years ago, four years ago, we decided to put a little money into it and then a lot of emphasis, uh, and, uh, support. And it's augmented to what it is today. And then, uh, like, once again, uh, we're, we're second in the, in, in the world. So that's, that's something to, to be proud of. But there are other campuses that need to have the same opportunity. And by bringing in a master online...
We do have a national champion in Fernando Mendez at the Garden Park. Let's not forget about him. And we got a lot of Fernando Espada. And he did do very well internationally, came in second. But let's not forget our national champion, which is...
I think we can afford a master at this point.
Mendez at Garden Park, which we should be very proud of. And, and I think both kids might be doing a story in both Good Morning America and, uh, I think, uh, what, Ellen DeGeneres is looking at Fernando Mendez, which is the national champion. So, uh, he, he might be our ambassador too. So we have a lot of great kids and a lot of great teams. And I know Mr. Hammond is out there. He's listening to you all because he's the one that helps write the chess handbook. And he's taking everything into consideration when we bring it back up for adoption.
It's a shame that we only put four hundred thousand dollars into the program, but that's what I'm saying.
We're revisiting.
Yes, thank you.
Also, I want to say, I, I agree with everybody here and the colleagues. Uh, I think we're big enough now that, we were thinking about it three years ago, the masters. So somehow, some way, we need to adopt in the budget a position for that. And I think y'all should look at it real hard.
Did you hear that, Mr. Powers?
Well, he can take chess and he can be the master.
Okay, uh, other than that, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Proceed on to, uh, twenty-two. Recommend approval to, uh, to add the evaluator to position at two hundred and twenty-six days for the two thousand six, two thousand seven school year at a pay grade three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Aguilar, motion second. Mr. Cortez, uh, Mr. Cortez.
Yeah, I just wanna, I, I was just glad to see that some of, uh, Dr. Weber's curriculum audit, uh, hasn't gone in vain and that now that you're taking the wheel, that you're starting to look at implementing some of Dr. Weber's, uh, and associate's recommendations. So I was just glad to see item twenty-two and twenty-three on the agenda today.
Appreciate that.
Mrs. Gavon?
I'd also wanted to echo that, um, being part of the curriculum committee. Uh, this is a, a big step towards, uh, making sure that, uh, we're on track, uh, in curriculum.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, and of course, uh, uh, being at that time when this was going on, I would like to perhaps, as the chairman of the curriculum committee, to ask, to put it in the agenda to bring an update, uh, the study. As to how, where we're at and what have we really implemented those recommendations. And I know it's gonna take some time, three years minimum. But at least we want to know a timeline as what have we done with those recommendations? And this is a good step in good direction, what we're doing tonight in these evaluators.
I echo everyone else's comments. Other than that, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, twenty-three, recommend approval to add the AYP compliance coordinator at two hundred and twenty-six days for the two thousand six, two thousand seven school year at a pay grade four. Do I have a motion? Mr. Aguilar, second by Mr. Cortez. Uh, Gavon?
Yes, this is just an echo of, uh, the previous numbered, number twenty-two. I'm just so happy, I'm, I'm sure the, the assistant supers are also very happy with the AYP coordinator. Uh, there's a lot of regulations, a lot of rules, um, it's hard to be in compliance. And, uh, this is a great position to have for our district. We are a big district and we do need this.
Mr. Cortez? Same thing, I, I'm just happy that, uh, we're taking the, our best foot forward. And it's gonna be a while, but I know that, that you're gonna be looking more into the curriculum audit.
Mr. Aguilar?
And of course, that, what I'm gonna say is, uh, we're taking steps to be more effective in curriculum. Because now we're gonna have someone to coordinate all these activities in the district, including consultants, that we can go and, 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 uh, guide or give suggestions to our principals in some of the schools that are in probation, that we probably have a better, uh, handle of the situation. And the best thing is, who's gonna win? Our kids.
Agreed. Mr. Lehman?
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. Aguilar, that's a good point. Uh, didn't we, at the last meeting, also appoint, or two meetings ago, a consultant? We just hired a consultant to help with AYP?
That's a Lopez.
Okay. They will be in conjunction, working with that person, I guess.
Well, you see, what, what happens with, no, the, the difference is, this is a permanent person that will work with all campuses concerning, no child left behind, and particularly AYP. And what we'll be doing is evaluating and, and working with. Now, when a school gets into problems like we had and, and they're at the stage two, then we're, we're giving state from, money from the state to be able to hire consultants to, to work with that. But right now, we have nobody in-house to work with them and say, where are we going?
The question was, what, what's a pay grade four?
Pay grade four, assistant principal level.
Yeah. Uh, you see the prize that the consultant got?
The consultants will still be there, but somebody will be working on it.
The amount of money that consultant got just to work one school, I suppose.
One school, yes. You better believe it, I agree with you.
Lot of money, I hope, uh, we get out.
I hope so too.
Any other questions? Other than that, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Proceed on to item D, recommend approval of the following contract and agreement. D thirty-one. Recommend approval to enter into memorandum of understanding between the Brownsville Independent School District and Teach For America McAllen, Texas, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars from the budgeted local and categorical funds for the two thousand seven, two thousand eight, and thirty thousand for two thousand eight, two thou- two thousand nine school years, service to be rendered subject to the district needs and fundings. Do I have a motion? Mr. Cortez, I have a second. Mrs. Gavon. Mr. Lehman?
Yes, I'm here. Gotta go to the contract. I was just wanted to echo Mr. Borrego's comments, uh, earlier, uh, that, uh, we, we seem to have a tremendous exodus of, uh, these fine, uh, teachers. And, uh, when you, uh, see their background and the, the universities that they come from, it's, it's, uh, just flabbergasting and, uh, very, uh, eye-opening. But the retention levels, uh, that's something we need to look at. And, um, I noticed that part B of the agreement, and I cannot find the page number. I didn't put the page number.
Twenty-eight? Twenty-eighty-nine? Twenty-five?
Hold on just a moment. It was part B. Financial obligations? Yeah, there you go, yeah, it's, uh, two eighty-nine, I believe. And, uh, maybe there, there's language there, if you want to pursue it, uh, that if, um, uh, if, if, uh, the teachers that fall out within the two years, uh, that if they stay in Brownsville teaching somewhere else, we get reimbursed the initial investment. I don't know. I mean, that's something that, we, we need to look at retention. It's like the Brownsville Police, uh, training all these, uh, fine officers and sent cherries to go work for the Board of Patrol or Customs. And there's a retention problem, maybe the money or, I don't know what it is, working environment. But that is something that Mr. Borrego kinda opened our eyes to, that, uh, the retention levels are low. And, and the exodus, uh, levels are high. So it's something we need to look at.
Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, and I'm also concerned with that and other things. For instance, uh, where are these teachers going to what schools? And again, I'm gonna bring it out, which I did last year and the year before that. If they were recruiting and a priority should be tax and the reading, where are these teaching? I remember last year, they had several of them in, in science and math and English and, uh, there was another discipline, which I recall that point. And this is what we, we would like for administration to look at. If we want to look exceptional teachers, why not bring them into the areas that the school is deficiency? I mean, it, it makes sense to me as a form principle. I would try to bring someone who's gonna help in the areas of efficiency. I'm not gonna put them in art, in music. For that reason, there's, I would, all over the place. And I agree with you, they, they just come here and they just leave. I'd rather send somebody else to recruit, come personnel, even though we do send them, right, uh?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, and, and, and I, I don't disagree with, 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 uh, with the board on, on many of these issues. Uh, this is an issue that I did already address and also I asked Mr. Peneta to address with the main person on Teach For America. And I didn't, I told him that we didn't particularly appreciate the fact that they stayed with us two years and then opened up a charter school right next to a school and, and almost went and recruited some of our students. We have brought this up to Teach For America. This is why the contract is a little bit different now. It says up to, it could be that we take none. It, it, we need for them to, to respect this district. And that the commitment is going to be for Teach For America to come and assist this district. We want them for more than two years. We want them to stay. We train them, we like a little further commitment, maybe five years from them. And if they are not happy and they wanna leave, that's fine, they have an out. However, I don't want them knocking on my back door, taking my better kids to a charter-type school. So, uh, when we work with it, we've had long conversations, administration has, uh, long conversations with Teach For America. They understand our position. And I have been working with Mr. Peneta and saying, we're looking at it, we're looking at areas that we really need, like, for, for example, in the areas that we really need, math, science, those areas that we really need. So that is where we're going with it. And, and this is, uh, why we took, uh, you know, we, we, this, they wanted us to bring it to you two, three months ago. And I said, no, not until we work out the kinks and they know exactly where we stand with Teach For America.
Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, I just wanna echo what Mr. Aguilar said and, uh, just, I guess if, if, if they're bringing these teachers from these, you know, Ivy League schools or whatever, and they're, you know, highly, highly, uh, trained, certified teachers, that maybe we should look at putting them in some of our low-performing campuses to, to help boost, uh, some of those scores.
Now, the only question I have of, because we're paying them to come, guys, we're paying it, so. How many of the teachers do we have as of right now on staff?
Mr. Peneta, do you have that number right offhand?
Mr. Gonzalez, uh, response to Mr. Powers's question, currently we have seventeen that are in their second year. Uh, when we started this particular cohort, we had twenty, approximately twenty-three. And because some do get homesick of whatever the reason, some do return. But, uh, currently we have approximately seventy-three. And in response, if I may, Mr. Gonzalez, to Mr. Aguilar's question, we have approximately eight of them at the elementary schools, the rest are in our secondary schools. Uh, we have quite a number at Befeto and at Lopez High School, as well as Rivetta High School. Uh, we have approximately eight under bilingual, four in special ed, four in science. Uh, we have approximately four in social studies. So we are hitting some of those areas, uh, of concern, but that's where we have the bulk of our students.
But they're obligated to stay here two years.
Yes.
They can't leave the contract.
Teach For America, but, but we get reimbursed in the end.
Okay, all right.
Give us our money back.
Any other questions? That's it. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, go to E, recommend approval of the following biz proposals and purchases. Thirty-two, recommend approval RFP number oh-seven dash one zero four for GPS tracking system to Everyday Wireless LLC MA. Do I have a motion? Mr. Cortez, do I have a second? Mr. Aguilar? Uh, Mr. Kalunga?
And I think, Mr. Powers, that most of the, the questions that I had were answered earlier, but, uh, did want to, uh, ask on the, um, on the, the cost, uh, of the system as far as the startup cost and the annual cost for maintaining the system.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Powers, members of the board, uh... Ms. Fox, do you have the exact numbers on those two hundred and ninety buses? Or do you have it, Mr. Sanchez?
Page two ninety-six.
Page two ninety-six.
Don't remember the exact cost of them. I think it's gonna cost, what, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, if my memory serves me right?
A thousand eighty-four per unit, and eighty-seven, ninety-one on the installation.
I believe that, that the total number is about three hundred thousand, Chirinos, is that about right? Three hundred thousand total cost?
Four hundred and twelve on that page.
Four hundred and twelve?
That's the total package.
Total package.
The turnkey operation to get started will be three hundred and forty thousand.
Three hundred and forty thousand.
That's the final line.
There's, uh, there's, there's warranties that, that's what I'm alluding to.
There are going to be warranties, there's everything in place. I've met with a gentleman, like, I can't remember your name, I apologize.
Michael.
Michael, I, I remember Mike, but I didn't remember the last name. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, we've gone over it, that it's, it's been in the works for two years. We've carried the budget twice on this thing. And, and tell you what, it integrates very well with the system that we have over there. And I was really impressed with the system. There is a good initial startup cost, but the amount of money, what we, the benefit we're gonna get from this thing is really tremendous. Uh, you know, sometimes we get a lot of calls coming in, Chirinos, I, Superintendent gets a lot of calls saying, the bus, uh, I have my kid, it's, it's seven-ten, the, the bus never showed up. Well, now I know whether the bus showed up, whether it stopped, whether it didn't. I'll be able to do a lot of things, that bring a lot of efficiency. Uh, sometimes I get calls, you know, from board members sometimes and say, I saw buzz number, whatever, uh, sitting at, at front of Stripes, uh, drinking coffee. Uh, they were there for thirty minutes or whatever. I'll know exactly they were there for thirty minutes. It'll increase the efficiency of the operation. Uh, sometimes a, a principal will call me and say, the bus didn't come back for the second run until five-thirty. Well, then maybe exaggerated a bit, maybe it was only four-forty-five. But at least I know exactly when, where, what took so long. Uh, if my buses are in San Manito, I'll be able to, to find out, uh, on their field trips, because I wanna expand that. Especially that buses are very, very important, that we know exactly where they're at and what they're doing, whether they're parked idling or not. Uh, a lot of times we get phone calls saying, uh, I remember our Triple T buses. Well, they're just parked there idling. Well, I wanna know if they're idling or not, wasting gas because the guy doesn't wanna get out to turn off the air conditioner. Uh, those are important things for us to know. So initial startup costs are expensive, I agree. But the benefits we'll reap, it's a one-time cost, it will be tremendous. So, uh, I, I totally support this, it's, it's been a long time in coming.
Mr. Aguilar?
Mr., thank you, Mr. Powers. And I, I really support the administration because I can see a lot of the safety of the children and, and of course, the cost-effectiveness in the long term is gonna help us. Uh, I just wonder, after the initial costs, will there be a license, uh, annual license fee or anything like that, Mr. Chirinos, Mr. Gonzalez?
At the, Mr. Aguilar, I may, Mr. Powers, uh, members of the board. The first year, it's already included. The second year, I don't remember the exact figures, Mr. Chirinos, but I know we went over in our office.
Yes, uh, the second year, and on a yearly basis for the next, for the next four years, uh, we'll have to pay in the average of, uh, seventeen thousand dollars per year. Eleven thousand for the system and six thousand dollars in that area for the software, for the software they'll integrate. It's already integrated, but it's a totally different system for our, so our buses.
So any updated, that, uh, so, uh...
Willing to be included.
Be included.
Yes.
As part of the package or additional funding?
They'll be additional on, on a yearly basis.
Yearly basis. Uh, and second, I have another question. I hope eventually we put it all, also in other departments, because they'll also be cost-effective. And I just wonder, Chirinos, are we gonna put it in also in administrators?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we're gonna put it in the trucks.
Well, I, I'll tell you what, I, that's been one of my long-term dreams, to put it in, in, in maintenance, of food service, in every, in every vehicle that we own, including the police. That we know exactly where they're at, whether they were speeding, what they were doing. Um, it, it just a better sense of, of, of security for us as administration. It's like, uh, I was, I was, uh, speaking to, to, to Mr. Aguilar just before the meeting, that we've really done some, some gains on just our time and attendance. that we've really done some, some gains on just our time in attendance. I don't know, when you walk out of this room, you'll see a little machine there, takes your fingerprint and tells you, well, when you came in and when you left the building. And we put them in transportation also, and it's really increased efficiency over there. Some people don't like it because nobody can punch in for you anymore. You got to put your own, your own fingerprint in there. And, uh, talking about administration, I'm the first. I go in there every morning, I put my finger in there, sign in. And, and when I leave tonight, I go back in there. And it also sort of tells, if anybody wants to know, well, Superintendent's never worked, wait a minute. Go to that machine. I'll tell you when I came in and when I left. And so, uh, it, it's a benefit to everybody. So, I think it's really a plus.
Uh, Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. Uh, well, I have basically the same question. I just broke it down. I think you said, uh, the initial cost would be three hundred and forty thousand.
Correct.
Because the, what you're alluding to, Mr. Aguilar, I guess the, the software and hardware are additional. The first year is free or it's built in.
That's correct.
So, we have eighteen thousand plus dollars on renewals for maintenance, uh, for up to five years.
Correct.
Okay. But my question, um, so, uh, you will be paying that additional every other year subsequent?
Every other year.
Okay. My question, uh, and, uh, from the beginning, um, the versatility and, and the upgradable or the, I guess, the, the, uh, upgrading of the system, uh, I know that, uh, for the safety of the child, uh, and I know we've, we've left children unattended before, which, uh, it is, it can be scary. But I know that the systems, uh, are elaborate enough to, like you said, through thumb or through some type of, uh, a body notification, uh, that.
Art, yes.
That the child can now, I mean, is that something we will incorporate in the future? Just, I know it might be off topic, but is, is this system able to incorporate or integrate something, a child accountability, that you know, that each child is, corresponds with that bus? So, we'll know that those children are on the bus.
Lehman, to address that, does it have the capability? Yes.
Integratable, yeah.
Very much so. And, uh, and the Michael, they're sitting just, uh, you know, salivating at the opportunity.
I know, he's licking his chops.
To, to, to say, yes, we do, can you, we want it now. At what cost? We'll look at it and.
No, but there's, there's, uh, national security and, and, uh.
There, there's a swipe card. I don't know if you saw the thing. There's a swipe card.
Well, I think.
And, and we're probably going to start eventually with special ed, more than anything else. That way, we know exactly where they're on, on and off. And then go into the pre-case and case. That's where we lose most of our kids or, and, and start at that level to bring them up. But the, you answer your question, does it have the capability?
Yeah, but, I mean, I think homeland security dollars because of the border, I think we need to look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that is paramount.
And, and, and it is integratable to the.
Homeland security dollars, if they're available.
Well, he's going to be the master. I don't know if.
Chess?
Okay.
Make some good moves there and get some home security money.
So, that's something that we need to look into incorporating because we need to know where each child is.
Correct. And we can do that.
Okay.
Any other capability to incorporate?
Any other questions? Other than that, all in favor, raise your right hand?
My follow-up question, uh, as far as, uh, I know that we only have two hundred and ninety buses and we want to, uh, possibly have these units, uh, in other, uh, vehicles.
Trucks, yes.
So, uh, this price stays or does it change or it's, does the price change as volume goes up or how does that work?
Well, what, what we do on this one, because I asked a question for Mike, basically what, what it is, he's going to train for, I think, a month or something like that. How to install them? So, we want to add them. We can install them ourselves. They just, we just buy it.
We just buy the system.
And then it, it.
And the price don't go up.
And, and Dallas has over fifteen hundred buses or something like that, so we can, we can, uh, put it on as many as we want to. The capability is there. The thing is, we want to train our people to do it. That way, if a bus wrecks and we buy a new bus or whatever, we just take that system and put it on another bus. And then we grow, the fleet grows, we can install.
But I mean, the, the complexity of a bus, I guess it has more, I mean, a vehicle, ten, a thousand eighty-four per unit, I mean, a vehicle, a car would not have the complexity of a bus. In other words, are these systems, that's my question.
You can answer that.
You can answer that. That'll be up to Mike there. You're going to give us a discount, I guess.
No, I mean, is there a break? I just had a curiosity.
The question that I believe I heard was, will we extend the unit cost for additional units? And the answer is, yes, we will.
But I mean, for a lesser type of a vehicle, the buses are very complex. I heard that, that you can tell whether doors are open or not. Is that?
Um, the unit cost will be the same, whether you want to put additional sensors on or not, or you could use other, uh, sensors on the same vehicle.
Alright. You just blew the sail.
No. Okay, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nine, closed meeting as pursuit to text the government code section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-four.
Final. Page two, and a one.
Item forty-two, recommend approval to not issue, not reissue a term contract for the two thousand seven, two thousand eight school year RA. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Gavon, motion taken by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor, say aye. I mean, raise your right hand? Motion carries. Forty-three, recommend approval for the proposed non-renewal term contract employee RM at the end of school year two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Gavon, second. Second by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
All against, one no. Recommend the approval for the proposed non-renewal of term contract employee WRT at the end of two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. Do I have a motion?
So, so move.
Uh, recommended by Mr. Lehman, taken by Mrs. Gavon. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries, one no. Uh, recommend the approval of termination of probationary contract for employee FP at the end of two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Ms., Mr. Gavon, taken by Mr. Klunga. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Forty-six, recommend the approval of termination probationary contract of employee LA at the end of the two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Gavon, second. Second by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries, one no. Forty-seven, recommend the approval of termination of probationary contract for employee NL at the end of two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Uh, motion by Mr. Gavon, second. Second by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Forty-eight, recommend the approval of termination of the probationary contract employee MCI at the end of the two thousand six, two thousand school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Gavon, second. Second by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor? No, by Mr. Cortez. Mr. Cortez, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Forty-nine, recommend to approve the proposed discharge of a continuing contract employee EP for good cause. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay, move, uh, move by Gavon, second by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries, one no. Item fifty, recommend the approval of proposed discharge of continuing contract employee OA for good cause. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Mr. Gavon, second. Second by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries, one no. Uh, go to item B, uh, fifty-one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or threatened litigation matters. Do we have anything?
Uh, Mr. President, I move to settle due process special ed hearing, uh, docket number one-four-four FE oh-two-oh-seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Pat, second. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we'll proceed on to item ten, announcements. Regular board meeting scheduled for April seventeenth, two thousand seven has been canceled. Next scheduled board meeting of the board trustees is on Tuesday, May first, two thousand seven, at the administrative building at five-thirty PM. Any, any other comments? Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, uh, just one more announcement. Uh, I will be asking, uh, Dr. Scovella, board president, to call a special call, board meeting on the tenth of this month, which is a week from today, uh, concerning, uh, personnel issues and other issues that, that need to be addressed by the board, uh, before the seventeen. And, um, Mr. Sanchez, do you have the score on the latest? Zero, zero at the half? And Pace has, uh, one. Okay. Pace has one. Alright.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Gavon, second. Pat, all in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you.